Twenty.
Three twenty-six there.
Okay. Well, yeah, yep. So this, this is sub-two of eleven. Thousand eighty-six acres. Total of twenty-nine hundred dollars is what we are estimating the levy will be to pay for the reclass for an average of two dollars and sixty-seven cents. Do you have anything, do you have anything in sub-two of eleven?
No, I just got a general question though. I just had one second.
Oh!
I was told a year ago by you that the minimum levy per parcel is five dollars.
Yes.
So how do you have a average of three dollars?
Well, okay, the, the total levy-
If the, no, what I'm saying Rick is if the minimum levy-
Yes.
-is five dollars a parcel, how do you have an average of two dollars and some odd cents?
Okay, the, the average of two dollars is per acre. And the five dollar minimum is on the forty acres.
Okay.
So, um, here's, like, here's one that the amount, total amount to be levied is a dollar eighty-nine. You don't levy for a dollar eighty-nine, you levy for five dollars. That's a good point. Cause I hadn't thought to point that out. Uh, here's another one for a dollar twenty-one.
That's per acre times your forty soaps.
No, no, this is the total levy on the-
The total of it, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
She's at one point ninety-nine acres.
Yeah.
Oh!
And one of the acres was just so small. So small that their levy came out less than five dollars. I'm glad you brought that up, cause that, I hadn't pointed that out. So anybody whose total levy is under five dollars gets a five dollar levy.
So the total settlement is twenty-nine hundred, the average was two sixty?
Yeah, two sixty-seven.
Okay.
Yeah.
So the total acres was a thousand eighty-six?
Yes, correct.
All right. Somebody wanna make a motion to approve this one, or do you have any other questions?
I'll make a motion to approve DD eleven sub-two.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye. I'm here for Rick.
Great.
Actually, you got my raise on here.
Oh, okay, good.
It's all right there.
Oh, you did two?
Good.
Mine's in the tab, but I'll read yours.
Okay. Okay, this is sub-three of eleven. Most of these are subs of eleven, one through six, we're covering this morning. Um, sub-three has three pages.
Fifteen eighty-one.
Yep, fifteen hundred and eighty-one acres. Average benefit, uh, two dollars and, or the average levy of two dollars and eighty-five cents an acre. Uh, total levy, forty-five hundred dollars. In general, with, it's a bigger district with more latos, we end up with more total cost, uh, because we reclassify each lateral also. I mean, we have those split out. So, um, I haven't looked at the range on these. Let's see, a three seventy-one. Looks like three seventy-one may be about the highest per acre. Down to a dollar thirty-nine.
Down to a seventy cent.
Those are one seventy cents?
Yeah.
Seven pages down.
Oh, sure enough. Okay.
I'm trying to figure out why that one.
Well, average benefit is fourteen points per acre.
Only three point-
Only three acres, yeah. So that must be a high knob or something. Um, yeah, it's a tract. Uh, I try and look then what the description is. So often a tract is, you know, well, you all know, you have farmsteads, sort of right on top of the hill. So this is a tract in this quarter-quarter of three acres. And it's, must be all Clarion with lots of slope. Cause that's the only way that'd get down to fourteen points an acre.
Wow.
Yeah, so their total levy would be two dollars and thirteen cents, but because it's less than five dollars, they'll get a five dollar levy on that parcel.
Okay. Got a motion to approve DD eleven sub-three.
I'm gonna do, approve DD eleven sub-three. One second.
All right. Four.
Same, uh, procedure with points and distances and all of that. Um, it's one-four, right? Okay, now here's one that ended up, it fell together very quickly. I'm not sure why on this one in particular.
It's all pretty cheap.
Yeah, thirteen hundred total dollars levied on eleven hundred and ninety-three acres. So it came out just over a dollar an acre average. I'm guessing there's maybe several on here that are five dollars. No, not too many. Most of them are more than five.
Fifty bucks and one thing might get set, over fifty bucks.
Yeah, see, and I don't know if you'd levy for this small amount, or if you'd leave it on the books a little bit. I mean, I don't know.
I don't much of a fan.
Depends if there's something else in there for me to-
Oh, true, true, good find. Cause yeah, for-
Same time, yeah.
She's always looking.
Yeah, that's right.
Right, got a motion to approve number four?
I'll make a motion for sub-four districts eleven reclass.
For second?
I guess I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Five.
Yeah, there's a couple of them came out very reasonable on the cost. Okay, somehow it just fell together very quickly and-
They're bigger acres.
Yep, yep, yeah, this one has almost twenty-four hundred acres. Um, and the cost per acre averaged a dollar twenty-one. Again, like I say, same deal with soils and proximity. Yeah, that's, that's it, I guess.
Okay, got a motion to approve sub-five of eleven? For a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We can have a sub-six of eleven. This is, I believe just- Yeah, it's just two pages again, less than two pages. Um, a little bit more than the last two per acre, but still very reasonable. Total of twenty-five hundred dollars that we, uh, put on this for the approximate levy you'd make. Over a thousand acres, thousand seventy-one, uh, average cost, two dollars and thirty-one, two dollars and thirty-three cents. Again, same factors you use, same commissioners, just that consistently, consistently.
Sub-six of DD eleven.
I, I was trying to-
I was trying to find out a map.
Yeah, and I didn't, I, that was one we didn't get marked on that, and I don't know why. Um, section nineteen, ninety-three thirty. Um, do we have a plat book? We can look at where that is. Ninety-three thirty, I'm not sure which township that is.
You know what, I took mine out of here again. Who's got their plat book?
There you go.
Okay. Is it Wakusta?
South of the extension and the one of the six.
Oh, oh, okay. Um, yeah, ninety-three thirty is Wakusta. We're in section nineteen, twenty, and twenty-one. Nineteen-
You have to find a little bit for me.
There's a picture right there on the map.
Two, there's two.
So Trish, you said it's kind of below eleven.
Trish, it isn't all this area here, there's no mark in it.
Yeah, right, yeah.
It goes up to the open ditch. It's only part of it.
It's kind of a- Long, narrow one, and under the extension of-
It just says full closure.
Eleven.
It doesn't have to get to cars. See, that's what they need to tell them to get their car to the road.
Yeah, yeah.
People don't realize that.
Provide access is all it says.
Provide access, well, that means foot traffic. And people get a little upset when they find out, ah, I can't get my car. Yeah? Yeah. So six of eleven's kind of below where you see a labeled extension of eleven, eleven extension. It's just, i- if you look at that, if, if the long, narrow part kind of under that is the sub-six of eleven.
Right in there.
Yep.
Okay.
Uh, motion to approve six of eleven?
Some move.
For a second?
I'll second. I found it.
Yeah, there you go.
All those in favor?
Aye.
DD twenty-six.
Twenty-two and twenty-five are way on the right side. Um, uh, well, they, uh, and they have a common outlet ditch. So what we've done is we have a reclassification for twenty-two. We have a reclassification for twenty-five. And we have a reclassification for the common outlet ditch, the common outlet part of the code. Um, so we're looking at twenty-two now. Again, not very big. Two, two, one page, two sides. Um, this one got a little more expensive, but still one you can get it for less than five dollars an acre on these small districts. I, I think that that's pretty good. Um, eleven hundred eighty-eight acres, total recommended amount that-
Excuse me?
There's all twenty-two in there.
Twenty-two we're on. Lay down in the bottom, and there's-
Yeah, yeah, right down near the outlet of, of eleven. Oh, okay, okay. So yeah, those are the numbers, the average cost of four dollars and fifty-nine cents an acre. Um, it's just for that twenty, the tile in that, uh, twenty-two.
Okay, I'm making motions for the reclass of DD two.
Second?
Excuse me, DD twenty-two.
Motion, a second, but Carl, all in favor?
Aye.
Now, this'll be the one right next to it, DD twenty-five. Again, not very big, um-
Twenty-two, twenty-five, or?
Oh, you're jumping over twenty-two, twenty-five.
Twenty-two, twenty-five, for right now?
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, okay.
Well, I got twenty-five in my order of pages, so that's fine. Well, just do twenty-five.
Okay, cause I got the other one right here if you'd rather.
Twenty-five.
Okay, so yeah, we're looking at twenty-five. Um, about a page and a half on that, little less cost, but still over four dollars. Uh, total district area of nine hundred and twenty-four acres. Um, and it's in twenty-five, you said you had yours. Okay. Oh, I'm sorry, I should-
You do that one? I'll copy.
Okay, okay. Um, these are the acres involved. Um, you can see where it is on the map. Uh, we use the soils and the proximity to the county tile factors, consistent with the others. Um, this one came out, um, oops, I was looking at the wrong one. This came out four dollars and seventeen cents an acre on the nine hundred and twenty-four acres. The total levy we were approximating was thirty-eight hundred and fifty dollars. Um, I guess-
Got one landowner at least, it's, uh-
Questions we'd be glad to try and answer.
Start with all questions.
Sure.
You figure for your proximity, then you figure that you get more benefit than the high side of the tile or the low side of the tile? For example, if this is the district here-
Yeah.
And the tile runs this way, you get more benefit up here or down here?
Okay, good question, not easy to answer because-
I can tell you, I can answer really easy.
Well, which is-
You get more benefit up here, because that drains a lot faster than this does down here.
If, if you design it like we do today, they should drain consistently. The old systems typically, the upper arm drains first. That's true. With, with the way things are designed now, we try to get the equal drainage anywhere along the system. For example, if they're further up, it's a smaller tile, but still, if you're after half inch coefficient-
May, may over time have been overloaded.
Yeah, oh, absolutely. And that's why the situation is, like he says-
Yeah, I mean, originally it probably worked right, but they just added more tile and more-
More and more and more and more. Unbelievable, yeah, our forefathers would, wouldn't believe it if they saw what was on today, so-
On that question then, I have four tracks in this, uh, district.
Okay.
There are one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, there's eight tracks above my four tracks. And one, two, three of those have lower benefit per acre than I have. And they drain a hell of a lot faster than mine does. So I'm trying to figure out why, I'm getting tagged fifty-four dollars and seventy-one cents, or fifty-four seventy-one for a benefit, fifty-nine forty-four, and fifty-one seventeen for ground that doesn't even want to close to drain before ground that's twenty-three, thirty-nine, forty-nine, fifty-six does. Fifty-one twenty-two.
Well, and it would, it would drop back to soils more than like it-
I've lived there for forty some odd years, same soil, trust me.
Well, yeah, it might-
I think soil maps, it's essentially the same soils across the most important areas.
Um, and I guess I, I, I'm not, I can't necessarily address that without looking at the soils maps, because our guys, our guys take the soils maps, download them, use the computer to get how many acres of each type of soil is in each forty acre tract, and then use our points per acre on soils, and then make the adjustment for proximity to the, to the county tiles. So, those are the factors-
If you get your drainage district map out, I can show you exactly where these, where these plots lay out. And I can show you that there's no way in the world that my stuff's gonna drain faster than theirs. Historically, I can tell you that. We get two in drain, I got water standing for three, four, five days, and theirs is the size of bone.
Well, and the, the reclassification doesn't take into account the sizing of the system necessarily, and I'm-
Just something to say, I'm talking about benefit per acre. And I got water standing on my stuff, and the water's gone off the other stuff. How in the world do I have a larger benefit than they have?
Based on how much the soils benefit from the drainage, and where you are with respect to the county tile.
Well, on that aspect, every, any soil's gonna benefit from drainage.
Yes.
And the other thought, I guess I'm gonna add, is why doesn't this take into effect effective drainage? To where when water stands on my farm, and it's gone over there, and yet that's got a lower benefit per acre than what my, my ground has that has water standing on it?
Because we can't tell why that's necessarily happening. Is there a partial plug in the tile? Is, has the tile collapsed?
The tile doesn't even go through my land.
Okay.
The tile goes through their land. That's why their land is draining faster than mine, because the tile doesn't go through my land.
How far-
Yeah, I've got, I've got three plots, or three tracks, that are higher than theirs are.
How far are you from the county tile with your, is it over a quarter, is it?
Yeah, it's over a quarter mile.
Okay, so there'd be some reduction there already?
It's not according to this.
Well, in the calculations of how these numbers became together-
I understand what you're saying, Rick.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm saying, what, what you're saying and what we see are two different things.
I mean, it's still, it's still the, well, I, we had the soils map, and the computer told us how many acres of each soil-
You tell me then, so what you're saying, how these three plots here- Have more benefit than these here, when these two here drain faster than these here.
Which two, these up here drain faster?
Yeah.
So which one are you talking about, Kevin? Are you to, uh, uh-
I'm, I'm in district twenty-five.
Right.
I've got, uh, well, I got twenty-eight acres, thirty-nine point six-one, and fourteen point sixty-six. I'm at fifty-four seventy-one for the benefit, fifty-nine forty-four, and fifty-one seventeen.
So is that off your mom and dad?
No, it's twenty-six, it's down to twenty-six.
Twenty-six, okay.
It's where I live, just, it's the east, the east quarter I have there. So the, the tile, excuse me, if the tile runs in going to twenty-six here, what we're talking about is, I'm right here, the tile that we're talking about in this district runs, starts up here and runs down through here.
That's what I thought.
But yet I've got a higher-
Is this draining towards that too, though?
I don't know.
Is this, is this over here?
No, no, that's a different district I was wondering. This, but my, my quarter here hits about, right about like this. You're saying that this, that this quarter here has more benefit than this up here than this here, which is top and bottom.
Correct.
Yep. Now, you're comparing-
That's my question.
The yellow highlighted to the green.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, but we're talking these-
Essentially, I'm talking, these three here compared to these two here, these two tracks here are higher, are, are higher up on the tile district than what these here are.
Well, yeah, you better let them know.
Okay, but we're, God, we're so close, I mean, in points, I think this is Rick's soil.
Rick, you know what, when you say that, that's easy, it's, it's easy for a person to say that when you aren't paying the drainage assessment, when you aren't paying the drainage assessment, it's easy to say, that sounds reasonable. You aren't paying the bill.
Well, no, no, true.
And when everybody gripes and bellicates about the, the secondary roads having such a, you know, the county has such a high bill for secondary roads, well, guess who pays that bill? Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, true, that's true.
It doesn't matter, it doesn't matter how much you wanna gripe and bellicate about it. It comes, it comes out of the landowners' pocket.
That's true, that's a levy.
So, I mean, it's a- Yeah, I had this discussion with Paul the other day, and Paul gripped and belliced, oh, God, we got the highest assessment of anybody in the county for, for drainage assessment. And I said, Paul, you don't pay that. I go, we pay that. One of yours is less than any one of theirs.
This one is less than three of them. Um, so you're, you're taking these top two and comparing to these top two.
Yeah. I'm looking over these leg, compared to any of these leg.
We have still got a full board here.
It's soils, I, I'm sure. I, I guess I would put our, if there's, if the computer calculating them compared to-
I've seen the soil maps, it's exact same soils in both those.
Well, they might have been tile, that's true, are you?
No.
But they never is. And that doesn't, you can't take that into account.
No, it doesn't, because you don't know what I have for tile.
It's accessibility to the county tile.
And the county tile, the county tile runs right down through the middle of their property. And it starts at the top end of their property.
So that's roots.
I, I really think it's the soils. I, I, I- Just because a soil will, could benefit, doesn't mean it will.
No.
When I, when I'm over, when I'm over three eighths of a mile away from the county tile, minimum, minimum, there's no in the world that soil is gonna benefit than where that county tile runs right down through the middle of it.
Um, okay, we're at twenty-five, right?
That soil's average for a full forty acre block, it can change, different soil type?
Yeah, it's the average of those, yeah. We take the forty acres, block it out on the soils maps, and then have the computer calculate, okay, there's three point eight acres of Clarion, there's twelve point something of Webster, eighteen of-
So the soil could actually be different in one parcel than the forty acre shows it.
Oh, absolutely.
You're in different soils that'll prove it.
Absolutely, yeah, we do it within the forty acre. Um- Yeah, the ones above you, we did not adjust, cause they were close. Your parcels, we adjusted ten percent lower because, yeah, because of the distance from-
But yet they're still higher than what their parcels are.
Yes, yes. The average benefit is higher on-
And it's farther away and it's higher. And there's no tile that runs through it. That just doesn't make any sense.
Yeah, it's soils. I mean, it's, the benefit a soil-
Soil, I mean, as I was saying, you have to take, you stay as in tile district, you take and use aquifer, because that's when it faces the waters, it runs down to the aquifer. You, you're, what you're telling me, Rick, is this water is running over three eighths of a mile laterally to a tile. Or, and, and it gets more benefit than the land that sits right above the tile.
You have the right-
No, that, that's what you're telling me. You're telling me that water that runs laterally gets more benefit than the ground that sits right above a tile, because of the soil.
Can't happen. Soils are tight, well, I'm not telling you anything, but some soils are tighter, it won't drain. Um, the soils reports even say, uh, excellent if drained.
That's, that's the issue, it says if drained.
Yeah.
And if they're not, I'm trying to say.
Well, you have the-
What I'm saying is, so, 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 so if this, so, so we're being told is land can be a half a mile away from a tile, and it's gonna drain laterally and get more benefit than land that sits right above a tile.
If it's a half, well-
Does anybody in this room believe that?
If, it depends on the soil, and we've reduced that-
I, I, I've got a question, does anybody believe that soil that sits at three eighths or a half a mile away from a tile is gonna drain laterally and get more benefit than land that sits right above a tile?
Some of that tile, soil tile might be different even when shown.
I don't care about soil, I'm, I'm talking, according to what, i- i- if we, if we take this concept of soil would benefit if drained, a hundred percent true, okay? A hundred percent true.
And that's, and that's what's-
Land, land, land three eighths of a mile away is gonna take and get more benefit than land right above a tile.
If you drain it, which you have the right to do, and if you're that far away, we've reduced the assessment so that you can put that towards draining it.
And it's still more than land that sits right above a tile?
Can be.
It's absolutely unbelievable.
It can, it can happen, it depends on the condition.
It can happen.
Yeah.
I can grow to be ten feet tall, and I didn't.
Yeah, yeah, but we're still, we're still using the soils as the basis, because if that land is drained, what do they gain for benefit? And the soils make a difference. I, everybody knows the soils make a difference in how, what kind of crop you can raise. And then if you drain them all equally, which never happens in a district anymore, but if everybody pattern tiles and drains into it, um, the better, there's still soils that raise a better crop than others. And that's part of the benefit.
Absolutely unbelievable, ground that's three eighths to a half a mile away from the tile gets more benefit from the ground that sits right above it. And I don't care what kind of soil it is.
The soils just make a big huge difference. I guess, and, and there's two farmers that I work with that do this, that have farmed a long time. They're, they work with me to compare with all that.
And when I got water standing on my land, and this other land, which is a lower benefit than I have, is bone dry.
You have clay and sand?
Then you can explain that to me, okay?
You have a higher percent clay if you-
Well, but then, but then why don't, then why don't they have a higher benefit? They have, if they got a sandier type soil, which used to be the concept, where that soil would take and drain better, have a higher CSR. They found out now the best now is necessarily true. But if they have, if they have a layer soil, which, which lets the water permeate down feet quicker, wouldn't they have a higher benefit per acre from the tile being there?
Not from the tile, cause they have higher natural drainage.
Which, which is the water gonna go to?
Well, if it's going down into the sand layers or whatever, um-
Is it present flow the same on both of those?
I don't know.
We're gonna have to agree to disagree on that, Rick.
Yeah.
Yeah.
There's a lot of things I don't like about my attorney's district I'm into.
I, yeah, I-
The other thing was, you said there's only thirty-eight hundred dollars of claims in district twenty-five?
For reclassification.
Of course. Yeah. So when I hear we've got, uh, forty-eight hundred dollars and eighteen cents, and one two hundred dollars goes to the, uh, for the balance, so it would be thirty to forty-six hundred dollars. DD twenty-five, twenty-five.
On mine, it's thirty-eight.
Thirty-eight fifty we have.
He said it's ten.
Oh, okay.
Was there other things included besides that?
Two hundred dollars, forty-eight, forty-eight eighteen, two hundred dollars, essentially two hundred dollars, two hundred and ten dollars going to Pat and Brent. Everything, everything else is all, it's engineering.
Reclass.
Yeah. And back when we added these up, this is what we were approximating for cost to the district.
Three thousand dollars difference?
Mm-hmm, yeah, approximately. Again, these are approximations at the time, I don't know if this got something-
Can I see that sheet?
Yeah, got more involved or what? Um, and you guys have decided what to levy, and-
And that might also include, you know, like we had that thing with, um-
That's what I'm asking, does it repair work, or?
Repair, with floodway.
Oh, oh, sure.
That flat dent deal.
Yeah, okay.
Which might not be just engineering board speculation.
Okay.
It might be a specific-
Other, yeah, there, cause there were other things. Yeah, the outlet was questioned, and that whether there was blockage, and there was a back blow up into the district. So they, we looked at it, we did some field examination, we made recommendations on what to do with that. That's in there too. The thirty-eight fifty is-
That was a thousand dollars for that?
Could've been, I, I mean, I'm, I'm not sure, which, it's part of them, um, part of one of those, so, um-
Well, it would be a thousand dollars, it might've been two different bills.
Right, it, it would've been.
That's what I guess.
Because what I heard off.
What's that, where?
Those different.
I don't know.
It's all one thousand fifteen. What does that total give you? Thirty, what?
Forty-eight, eighteen, forty-five.
Okay. Hundred and seven dollars goes to Pat, hundred and two dollars goes to Brent, everything else is digged from the rest of it.
Yeah. Yeah, we do ninety, ninety-five percent of this, we put together and then we set with the commissioners and make all these adjustments we're talking about. So, yeah.
Eight hundred dollars over probably, well, less than eight hundred dollars is what they could bet for that.
Yeah, so it's going to add to a dollar an acre to cover the other costs.
But that would be, yeah, they would have that on the assessment.
Yeah, correct. Yeah, Trish will be, will look at all these, I'm sure, and summarize what's in it and how much to bill and how much to levy. Again, this is, we wanted you to know what the reclassification cost. I did not even talk to Trish about what else you have in these districts. I wanted you to see what the reclassification cost.
And that's what we're approving today.
Yeah, yeah. Exactly. Well put.
I don't get unhappy, and I've been happy every time I get assessed. I got a five inch.
You got, you got.
Mile that comes under.
Twenty-two hundred, you gotta show the man or, you know, or then start really, a little bit of silver lining.
Because it used to be the absolute, you know, facility of paying an astronomical amount each and every year. How much can a drainage district hold back in reserve?
I don't know if there's a number.
There's no specific number.
So I showed Mr. Hopper last year that we tripled twenty-five hundred dollars back.
That's what I usually do.
That's, I mean, that depends on the. Is that for every district or is it dependent on size?
To me, it depends.
Depends on the activity of the district.
Yeah.
Well, the fundamental to that is, you know, we keep saying, "Well, we don't know if we're going to levy this or if we're going to do this or not levy it or whatever." If I pay interest, you have forty-eight hundred dollars and eighteen cents in District Twenty-Five. How long do I have to sit and pay interest on it?
Every year, you bring a lot of them to the board to levy.
I'm just somebody asking a question because, I mean, there's a lot of people asking this question. Because when we got, when we got burned in, I can't remember which district it was, if it was eleven or one thirteen, whichever one it was, we had bills that were seven years old. We paid interest for seven years. The interest was over twenty-five thousand dollars in that district. When we finally got levied to the tune, my bill on the alone was eight thousand dollars and I was one of the smaller guys. And one day I wrote a check over thirty-five thousand dollars in drainage assessment in that district. When they find out that the interest was twenty-five thousand dollars, they were real happy. And the question was, why are we, why, if we get a damn bill, why don't we pay it?
Well, Trish has been doing a good job from what I've seen as far as keeping up with this. When you guys have seen the list she brings to you for recommending payment.
When the question was asked why we had a bill seven years old in that district, you got blamed for it because while we were waiting for reclassification, this person got blamed for it because of this, this person got blamed for it. That's why I guess I'd like to have supervisors at least get some type of a protocol or something like that set to where if a district can hold X amount of dollars back, and I'm just going to use twenty-five hundred dollars just for the sake of discussion, okay? If a district can hold twenty-five hundred dollars back, as soon as a district, as soon as a district gets to five thousand dollars in claims, you levy it. If it happens every, if it happens every other year, fine. Because you got your twenty-five hundred dollars in reserve to pay part of it. You can go ahead and levy them to a certain amount and get your twenty-five hundred dollars back in reserve. But, you know, people, people are not going to gripe and bellic and complain about spending fifty or sixty bucks a year when all of a sudden they start getting six thousand dollars every four or five years. Man, I'll tell you what, the fur flies pretty darn fast. But yet, I've asked Trish this question, if she has, if the board has given her any kind of type of a protocol or any kind of a standard as to when she should levy. And like Trish told me, she said, "No," she says, "It's really up to me." So I think what we need to have is some type of a protocol in place.
You can't.
Yes, you can. You can simply, the board can simply say, "Anytime, anytime, anytime you get twice what we have in reserve, that's when, that's when the district is levied."
Okay, what if you have a project coming in the next six months? Are you going to want to levy that before?
You've levied it before, or when the claim, after your claim comes in. You can't levy something ahead of time on a presumption that it's going to be exactly this amount. But, so in that, in that case, Trish, if you got, if you got claims of four thousand dollars on that district, all right, and you get, we'll say a hundred thousand dollars comes in, that's going to trigger the levy right then because you're over the five thousand dollars. But they're going to know that there was a huge, that there was a huge project that came in. Conversely, if it's a four thousand dollars, you pay the twenty-five hundred, you got your fifteen hundred you're only paying interest on instead of paying interest on four thousand dollars for six, seven, eight years.
You go through all the districts and look at how much is old, right? Yeah, and then from that, you develop a list to bring to the supervisors.
And it depends on every year, on projects that are in the works right at the moment, there's no sense in levying at that moment. Upcoming ones, if there's litigation, I mean.
Biggest one is, is one of the seven years. I find that hard to.
And that was D D eleven, I assume.
I think, at that time, it's correct, yeah. That should have never happened.
Some of this work goes back a long time, yeah.
Well, I know.
And the reclassification.
Well, and there was time before me that it did not pre-get levied and.
Yeah.
And when it does get levied, the bills that are the oldest get paid the first. If there's warrants outstanding around waiver payments, they're going to pay the oldest ones first. So this one that's seven years old might have been at the end of the survey and never got covered by the levies in between. Because.
A portion of that one, seven years ago, you need a portion of it. Well, I agree with Kevin. I don't, somehow, we shouldn't have that kind of business.
Well, it almost has to be on a percentage basis because some districts are huge and some are small.
I mean, yes.
I get to see how you set it up. I'm just going to say, have some type of a protocol. That would trigger it.
Yeah.
So you're not paying huge amounts of interest on an old, old bill.
As part of your work, Trish, do you, do you make a summary of every district and what the balance is in it? You do, don't you? I thought you did. I thought I seen that. And I think.
Yeah, I can't remember how many had levy last year. It was ridiculous. My mom.
Yeah. So you don't have a.
Do you need help doing this, levying, getting it out? Where do you get that? Yeah.
So Trish is trying to do what you're saying, now that she's doing these, but it's a matter of, is there a limit? And she's right, it varies with every situation, so.
And see, when they do waiver payments too, I've had people not pay their drainage. I have outstanding drainage taxes. When they don't pay it, that bill doesn't get paid.
So that can be part of that in it too.
I mean, you just don't, I, without looking at it, I wouldn't know, but.
Well, can we check with, say, Webster, Cassuth, some of those counties and just say, do you have a number that triggers? I mean, see what they're doing.
We all did the same.
You all, that's what I wanted.
And see, we've had meetings on that too, on how to monitor it, evaluate it, whatever. Yeah. It's very, there's so many variables to it.
Did you just do an analysis?
That's black and white on it. I wish there was.
Would you home turn that money back when years you spray the ditches? That's got to be paid somehow. Sometimes you haven't enough to continue to pay their assessment for that, don't you?
Not very often. But what I've started last year was the drainage districts that have ditch cleanup or, you know, open ditches that will need to be in the rotation in three years for spraying. I predict that, so whatever the average was of three years ago or two years ago, I kind of estimate that in.
Definitely put that in there.
Knowing it's going to come up, it's going to be a bill. Probably going to be more, but it's at least something to go by.
And part of what the board's doing with, like, what, we've got nine or ten reclassifications here we're going through is to get reclassifications done efficiently, ahead of time, so that the repairs can be distributed fairly.
That would help too.
Yeah.
Some of these ahead of time, then you know what amounts.
But we have these today and I think you have five or four or five another day here coming up in a few weeks. So you're trying to get a lot of these done. And some of this goes back a long time to the previous drainage clerk, so.
I'm not blaming anybody.
No, no.
Process of, there's so many different things you've got to wait on and.
This county's probably got more drainage than six eighty counties in Iowa, so you've got to have a backlog someplace.
Well, that's, yeah, yeah.
Okay, does somebody want to make a motion or are we, any discussion with your wishes for?
So I guess my question then is just a matter of, what we've received in the mail is basically it's going to be no matter what the person says.
Well, if, if the trustees believe it warrants adjustment, they can.
Well, I kind of thought they were going to be here since I was told I need to be here a little bit after ten o'clock to.
Well, the commissioners rarely come to the meetings, just, yeah, they just rarely.
So it's going to be what's going to be.
Probably.
That's a heck of a great idea. Just send it out and that's just what it's going to be. Well, no, we can't, we can't make the manager, every commissioner and everybody at the point, it would be more stressful. I brought a, I brought a pretty good information and.
He didn't.
It's just, you basically completely ignore it.
Not even.
When I've got, when I've got ground, I have water standing on it and the other ground has water that disappears off it. Yet I've got a higher benefit per acre.
There's so many factors, there's so many factors. So how is yours tiled? Where do you connect to the system? What are your soils? Yeah, what are the conditions of the, of the county main there? There's just so many things that come into it that can affect the drainage. A tile breakage, every year I bet you have a spot where, several spots where you have to send somebody out and check for a breakage because water's pounding where it didn't used to.
There hasn't been a person out in that, on that district for thirty years.
Hasn't been what?
There hasn't been a person out fixing a tile on that district for thirty years.
Oh. I, yeah, I don't know.
I can tell you that.
Okay.
I live there.
The, the, is the main, yeah, it's all tile. I, yeah, I don't, I don't know what to say about it, I guess. I don't know. What it stands.
It comes down to a point where I think we as supervisors have to trust the commissioners on the engineering side because they may even say, we got to start getting different commissioners, but we just want to come in. That's why I was hoping to have a chance to talk to the commissioners and find out how this was done, we have been here.
You know, one commissioner, I mean, is that three?
Yeah.
Well, we have our time when we ruin. The commissioners I'm seeing on my bill are Pat Gil and Brent Keenstone. I don't see one of them here.
Yeah, they, they tell them they're very welcome.
They got full-time jobs too.
They're not obligated, but they're more than welcome.
My time's just pro bono, I guess. You can contact those in the big, they're like. You can help them. I've talked to them in the big, they're like.
Sure, yeah, but, yeah, Brent wants to do this right, Pat wants to do this right.
They'd be welcome to your comments, I'm sure.
Yeah, yep, so.
Okay. I don't know the answer, but we have to trust some people to do the job for us. We as a group can't come in and overrule everything they do. Well, I understand that, but when somebody shows up with a legitimate concern about it, it should probably be addressed and something done instead of just, "Yeah, we'll let him talk. Now we're going to pass it anyway." And that's essentially what's happening. I have a question.
Yeah.
According to, like, our previous one on D D two, we have written objections to that, so we tabled it. Can this one be tabled without a written objection? That's my question. I don't know the answer to that.
The law usually says with the time that hearing starts, you have to have that written or. Yeah, written. Many people don't know that, but I think that's the code.
But it says it, I don't know if that's.
Okay. It's a filed written objection, yeah. Well, I know we use the soils and I know we use the proximity factor. Short of an error in the soils.
Kevin, did you get a letter about that hearing? Kevin?
Yes.
Did it say anything about filing objection?
Oh, yeah.
See, that's.
It also says, uh. The report will be telling you a portion of the responsibility for Twenty-Five is attached and you should, if you have any questions, they should be directed to the drainage clerk. Then you're further notified. Supervisors shall proceed in hearing from all written objections. Well, if you want a written objection, I can get you one real fast.
So I need to know, like, if. Well, the question goes back to Rick and permission.
Yeah.
You want to review it if you want to change it.
I can, I can be sure the soils are right and.
I have no objection, Kevin, we've looked at. Because, I mean, I don't know, people, you know, mistakes do happen. So I have nothing against if we, if we can do that legally.
But he took the time to come in to object, so to me, his verbal objection is as good as written.
Well, and you, you as trustees can, can make adjustments based on facts. So objection or not, if I saw an error, I could say, "I don't like this, there's something wrong with this."
If you find something in error that you didn't like, you could change, but if there's nothing in error, you would follow this procedure with everybody, so you wouldn't be changing that.
Right, that's right. This is, all of these we've worked on today is the same procedure.
Well, I would suggest that we allow you to go back and look that over since.
Yeah, because I mean, errors do happen.
Oh, yeah.
I, it'll stand as it is, but that's still worth a review.
Yes. And maybe what I can bring is the summary of the soils per forty acre tract, so you can see what they are.
Right. So should we postpone for two weeks?
Yeah.
Block on here, so.
Yeah.
I don't have a plan for that.
For two weeks? Trish, you got a time that we, you want to look after in two weeks, so we get a time.
Is that the ninth? I look in a period.
Yeah, we're ready. Well, if you went three weeks, you got D D eighty-four at nine.
Oh, yeah.
All right. So I don't know how long that will take, but.
It's going to take a little bit of time.
Yeah, because I want to know where things stand and.
You do eight to nine five before.
Yeah, maybe we should do eight.
On the sixteenth.
But you have the annexation. I have written down the annexation.
An annexation at eight thirty-five.
Nine, nine. Yeah.
My secretary forgot to write that one in.
Uh-oh.
Should we say nine fifteen? It might just a little bit in case it runs long. It may, it may go quick.
It might, just don't know.
It could run.
Sixteen.
Because there's nothing on there. You have that one at nine o'clock, eighty-four.
Let's set it for nine fifteen, how about that?
Are we going to, the hearing on the proposed repairs for eighty-four, is that then?
Nine.
Do you think that would be lengthy? It could.
It's going to take some time talking about the options and.
Yeah, she's got nine thirty next, so.
Something like nineteen thirty.
Well, nine, two, we got Gilmore, or Braggay on the repair. That might be a lengthy discussion. Better give it a little time for that one.
Nine thirty. Well, everybody, I'll be expanded by that.
There you go.
I got mine already done.
Nine thirty on May sixteen.
Okay, that would be D Twenty-Five. Now we're going to go back to D D twenty-two, twenty-five.
We can continue that hearing on that date?
Yeah, I suppose we better.
I'm willing to continue. D D.
Twenty-five.
On May sixteenth and ninth.
Okay, we're going to move my comments here. Second. Where's, follows and fades. All right. All right, that's what we'll do.
Okay.
Now, in the meantime, would you want him to put a written objection in?
Yes.
Did you do that, Kevin? Appreciate that.
All right, twenty-two, twenty-five.
Okay, this is for the common outlet, which. Twenty-two and twenty-five come together and then the outlet in the same ditch. So there was not a classification available for that ditch, but it had to be maintained by someone in the, that is, twenty-two and twenty-five districts because it is their outlet. So we've got four pages on here. So we've got four pages on here. This basically includes all the property in twenty-two and all the property in twenty-five. Twenty-one hundred and twelve acres, uh, average cost per acre for the reclassification came out to a dollar forty-seven. Since twenty-two and twenty-five were basically done, it took very little to put this together. We basically combined those two reports into one, and the cost of classification came out to a dollar forty-seven an acre. We spread a total of thirty-one hundred dollars. Now, there may be other dollars involved with repairs, I don't know. I didn't think to even ask Trish, so, um, yeah, same procedures.
Well, that G D thing, has to, what happened to twenty-five?
Because I have a question in twenty-two, twenty-five.
You might have, you could add at the same time.
Yeah, if there's, yeah, if there's issue with the soils or something, yeah, it'd probably be the same type of consideration.
Well, I've got, yeah, I've got several questions.
A good atmosphere for them four to work on.
Push that to the sixteenth and at nine forty?
Yeah, I think that's what we should do, is put it in fifteen minutes later after that one.
Yeah, I don't know, Kevin. I don't know why those units are different. I don't.
That would give you time to talk to them and then you get Kevin to go through it, and maybe you'll find it before you get there, some changes.
Yep, there you go, I hope that's the case.
All right.
All right. So I'll move that we table that, uh, twenty-two, twenty-five until the sixteenth of, at nine forty-five.
One favor?
All right.
And then DD sixty-nine.
Okay. DD sixty-nine. This is a very small one. Half a page.
Steve, you might drop it back on paper.
So...
I don't see.
Oh, I'm sorry, I gave you one and you had, yeah. Sixty-nine, half a page, was so small that cost per acre ended up going up some, um, but the total levy for reclassification, we had, we were recommending thirteen hundred dollars.
How much?
Thirteen hundred dollars was the levy we figured for the reclassification.
Two hundred and forty, almost two hundred and five?
Yep, correct.
Thirteen hundred dollars for the reclassification, David?
Yes.
When I picked this up on paper, it showed total claims of seven hundred and eighty-six.
Wouldn't have thought we'd have added...
Well, I believe it, I just, I wouldn't have thought we'd have added that much, but maybe, no. Total claims...
Then you've been not having it repaired.
It's on there though.
No, everything's probably...
No, probably not. Yeah, this one has been, yeah, maybe the, maybe at this time...
Well, it showed, showed up thirteen hundred dollars.
Two weeks ago. Okay. Two weeks.
Well, this one, this one showed up on there, because we haven't even approved it yet.
I'm just saying, it's a situation where when I pick things up, it shows the total, total claims of seven hundred and eighty-six dollars, and Rick's saying we have thirteen hundred dollars just in classification.
Yeah, that's, that's what we approximated based on our time in it and then adding a little to be sure you were covered.
I don't know if it's on there. How would we...
That seven hundred, is that for other work done? That's not for this here, because we haven't even...
We haven't even approved it yet.
You've got me, all, all this is Japson Westergaard, and I think it's, I'm not sure if it's Pat or...
Pat and Brennan again, yeah, okay.
For how much?
Seven eighty-six.
And we had one bill for five hundred and seventy-four at the time.
So you probably...
So there must have been another invoice.
Hardly one, yeah.
Yeah. There must be another invoice on here for this, it's not on this summary, because...
When was that printed out again?
January eleven.
It's probably, it was two weeks ago.
The last bill on here from us was just, I think it was only three dollars and ninety five cents, I don't know what that was.
That was from now.
Oh, okay. So the last invoice from us for any work on this was January eleven, so there's four. It's not all on here, yeah. But it does look like, all it is is, the reclassification looks like a small charge for some maps. So, yes, my thirteen hundred is closer.
Well, is that on top of the seven then, or is that part of the five hundred?
I believe that five hundred and some is part of the reclass, but I'm not sure, we did a lot of these last winter. Um, we'd have to look at the invoices to see what's going on with that. But yet, our approximation for reclass based on our time and like the charge, we're saying was something less than thirteen hundred and we rounded it to thirteen hundred.
I kind of like rounding for five hundred, we've got bills.
Yeah, well, yeah, there had to be another invoice.
I understand, yeah, I'm just going to say, you know, how many people take a look at this and they say, well, gosh, you know, seven hundred and eighty-six dollars, whoa, now we got thirteen hundred dollars, you know?
I don't, I don't think we went to the point of talking how much extra to bill, did we? Because I, my intent with this was, what's the reclass going to cost? And I tried to up it just a little from what I thought our final cost was going to be, but very little.
So once again, I have a question about how I've got a higher benefit per acre than other landowners. My eighteen acres, you're getting tagged fifty-one dollars and sixteen cents.
Yeah, those are, those are points per acre.
So it just represents average benefit per acre.
Yeah, that, those are the points, where you go zero to a hundred.
Yeah, I got thirty-nine, forty, forty-five.
Fifty-six, fifty-three, fifty-five, fifty-seven. Several of them, yeah.
Three, four.
Two, three, four, five. Yeah, about half of them are higher, or more than.
And the land that's in, uh, above me, above the tile, has a lower, that's why I asked my question earlier, you know, if you're higher on the tiling or lower on the tiling, which one gets the most benefit? Because I'm the lone man of the toad on this.
Well, some of them on the upper ground though, and if they're clarion soils up above, the clarions have, have been historically charged less points per acre, just because, yeah, they can use side hill tiling and things like that, but it tends to run off. Um, so the clarions are typically not as high in the units, units per acre for this, when you use the soils. So those are, I mean, half of the district is higher than his. Um, I think that's a pretty good indicator.
Formula's going to change on this.
I can't imagine it would.
But the other three you already did.
Yes, yes.
I think the listener reviewed, to be very honest with you. It's like I said, where my land sits compared to the southern land, it's right next to it.
It can, that's three to five hundred dollars to the levy. Because I'll have to have my tech pull these up and do this, just first.
Yeah, this is...
I mean, the increase, the cost, three to five hundred dollars, probably...
We're going back three landowners there.
Yeah, I mean, we, we're glad to do it, but I just, I think...
So I'll just smile and say thank you very much.
There you go. Well, but I, I mean, soils, location, with the adjustments.
Only. Well, I got, I guess, so when I got the water standing and the other water's gone, you tell me how I benefit from it.
And I'll say again, it's just so many factors that come into why the water's standing, so many factors.
Well, and there are several that are above it.
Yeah, several. Half of them, half of them are above it, if I looked at it right, so.
I'll call for the question, anybody want to make a motion on DD sixty-nine?
I'll make a motion for the reclassification of DD sixty-nine.
There's a second.
We're giving benefit, we have, I'll second it when we discuss, I'll second the motion. And then I'll go through and ask the discussion, but there'd be benefit of throwing us in and discussing all of them at the same time. We're going to accomplish anything.
Well, it's, it's going to cost money.
Yeah. Three guys, the three, three landowners, it's going to cost somebody five hundred dollars, you know? Probably cost you more to protest it, Kevin, and it's going to be worth it, I imagine.
What's wrong with that scenario? What is wrong with that scenario? You have a question about something that's going to cost you more money, just question something.
Because if that's...
And yet when you sit there and you, and you look at the benefit you actually get is basically zero, you get, you get tagged, I'm over the, I'm over the average in that district.
That could be.
I am.
But it'd be on soils.
What is average, and I'm sure you've...
Fifty, fifty points, something like that.
He's fifty-one, so he's nearly at average.
How about, but I'm higher than average?
Less than one point.
We got a question. If yours comes back in higher, then what happens if we look? I mean, that's probably...
Oh, absolutely is a possibility. I mean, I don't know, we'll, because I'll have the soils.
We don't have no part in this and...
But you're going to use the same factors.
Oh, same factors. Soils, numbers.
Evident error, you're not going to change your factors.
No, no, I'd have, I'd have the forty printed out with the, how many points per acre for each soil.
This one.
Yeah.
A hundred and fourteen dollars, fifty, a hundred and fifty.
Yeah.
Well, it shouldn't be the same factors.
Well, maybe you can review it.
Yeah, because, and like I said, I'd have to have the tech, sit down at the computer, block it out, print out again the, how many acres of each soil and the points in the table, and then I'd take it, I mean...
I think there's probably the other two, I don't think so.
Yeah.
All right, there's a motion, a second, and we're discussing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
All right.
Mort, did you vote aye or vote four?
No, I'll vote nay too.
I'll vote four, all right.
Okay.
The only, well, that's the only thing I see, is I, I don't really know if we're going to get any benefits, but I guess...
It seemed to be a target, that's why I looked at it. I could see if it was, if he was one of the highest ones, I could understand it, because it looked, but you're average.
I just like the concept that Trish said, that some people just don't pay drainage, so I just don't pay, I just don't pay attention.
Well, you can do that.
Unfortunately, that'll...
We probably had a generator shooting at you for a hundred and fourteen dollars.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, that was not...
But on that same case, they treat that the same as your real estate taxes.
Oh, yeah.
For...
Go for share of sale, or whatever.
All right.
Okay.
Anything else that you have for us this morning? We've talked about a lot, we've talked about Bradgate.
Let me just go real quick here.
I'm, we're going to have to go back and do any of the claims.
Well, we got to adjust those claims before we...
We're going to have to do that, so we can open, do that.
Yeah, we got to do that in open session.
Need a break, so.
All right.
So we'll break, we'll go back into drainage, and then we'll have to let it go to drainage. Are we going to be in open sessions or drainage to do?
We have to be in open, to go into drainage, and then in drainage, we have to go into closed session, correct?
Is that correct?
Yes, yes.
Are you kidding me?
I was looking, I thought you were done, I looked at, caught your eye, I thought...
Just want to get that one.
No, no, sorry.
I'm still here. Mort needs your signature.
Just so you know, I've, I've been talking to, um, Larry Trogger, he has a question on a possible old ditch, uh, bridge pilings in a ditch on eighteen that might be restricted.
I've been out and done it.
Okay. Yeah, I don't know, if, if you had that little rain, maybe we can get out there today.
I was just at Coyote Hutton, I seen it.
Okay.
I didn't make a special trip, but I've seen it, I know what he's talking about.
So I'm going to call him and try and meet with him today before I go back.
It is, there's, there's an old, uh, bridge that was in there from back when, way back, and it is, kind of caving in and...
Okay, yeah.
It should be cleaned out.
He'd like to look, and we talked quite some time ago, and I said, when I'm coming down, I'll call, so I told him I was coming down, and I'd call him before I left the area today.
Mort.
Now, we have a question about this thing, pretty work order, is there any work order? Hey, Stephen.
Okay.
Rick?
Yeah, were they sent to me to be put on the agenda or something?
Well, for discussion, but not for payment. Ten and nine, and I...
Yeah, see, and we had them on our agenda for payments, we got it readjusted.
Yeah, see, and I just had our office manager email it to you, yeah, we should have sent a message with it saying, just for review.
So what I think we should do is go out of drainage, give you guys a break, because then we got our closed session. And then maybe come back here and look at that and pay thing, and then we'll have to go back into drainage.
Well, I have one quick question for Rick, and I, I'm not accusing any, my question is, is there ever a point where you feel like we're putting too much on you or your, your group? Because, I mean, I don't want everyone to feel like you're, when you walk into the stack like that.
I, I agree with this.
Well, I'm sure you do, but it, it, sometimes there might be a point where we get so much, so many things, irons in the fire, and that's my question.
Well, it's a good question, but I feel that we've come a long ways towards getting that list reduced. We have a drainage summary sheet that says projects that are active, and the Humboldt one has progressively gotten smaller. So I, I, I think you'll see anything new, you can crank out pretty fast.
I need to be to benefit, when we get to talk with landlords in DD two, it'd be often nice, probably, to have their benefit people.
Do I sign both?
Yeah, we would try to do that.
No, no, you know, all you...
Yeah, yeah. But it's, the cost isn't very much for the commissioners. Um, no, I will try to arrange that, at least one of them, maybe both of them can be there.
Kevin, do you have a question?
Yeah, I just have a real quick question right now. I see Rick Peterson, not, first Rick, the other Rick Peterson, has the long reach excavator. His excavator's sitting down on Blood Run Creek again, uh, through section, the lane thirty-four, on the west side of that. Is that there from the supervisors saying he needs to be there, or why is his excavator sitting there looking like it's starting to come down Blood Run again?
Are you sure it's his?
Yeah.
Yeah, well, as far as I know, it is.
Yeah, you're on the same list, or somebody else has a long reach, uh, oh, I don't know who else we have.
Mark sounds like he's just a new one.
Yeah. His, Rick's got the extra long.
The extra long, right.
With the skinnier bucket that he uses for dipping.
Right. Because that was just done two years ago, well, two, three years ago. We're not looking at that again or not.
We're just, okay.
We're being Delana, I gotta think, thirty-five, thirty-four, I'm sorry, uh, sitting on the east side, or the west side of Delana thirty-three, uh, right, right south where Jim Volten's story store is.
On every Tom Hunter mark.
Yeah, just north of the Tom Hunter marks. It's sitting there on the, on the east side of the road, on the north side of the dredge bench.
That's his private work, there's a...
I, I didn't, I didn't know what this private worker, there's something...
Yeah, cause nothing's been brought in, but I haven't...
I don't, I haven't heard of anything being done there.
I wasn't sure, I just, I didn't know that. He was doing tile on that hill earlier, but I don't know what...
Oh, yeah, that's true, I knew she talked about that a little.
Okay, come again and tell me exactly where it was.
It'd be on the west side.
Not right behind on hills. Tom Hunter mark, I think, fourth and island, didn't he?
Well, no, it's on the north side, Mike's got the land up in there too, I got...
Mine.
Which one is that?
One, thirty, one and thirty.
Thirty-three, right here. Is it? Well, that's Doug Marshall's.
But that's thirty.
Oh, sorry, no, it's over here, right there.
What's the thirty? Section, third section?
Thirty-two.
Oh.
No, Delana.
Delana.
It's not thirty-six. No.
Mike, what were you doing there?
Thirty-two, yeah, right, right, uh, west, it's on the west side of, uh...
Between David Hunter Marks and Budwick?
Right, it's on the north side. I don't know of anything that's going on, I didn't, I didn't know if there's something that's going back in there again, or what, so, uh...
Beaver, do you, it's on, looking for, are they there, are they?
Not there.
No.
Will you sign that work, or should I sign that?
Go ahead.
Okay.
Yeah, go ahead. If, if, if you guys don't know anything about it, then I'm just gonna assume it's something that I'm being good privately then, as opposed to going back in and... I'm guessing.
Clean ditch or something, yeah, I don't, I don't...
We don't wanna say, we don't wanna say that, because it's also a topic of bad discussion. Well, you might, I was just sat there too, for reasons, if he's got something in the area, go back to, like Marcel, he let, he let his several by hard...
I, I wasn't sure, I mean, I was...
If he's got a hard, that's fine, I wasn't... Yeah, I'm not sure either, I don't think there's anything that's going on, so. All right, I'll entertain the motion, and we go out of drainage, we'll time in. You second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
All right.
All right, we'll bring, we'll take you back in, tie you up that, and then we'll go back into drainage.